Good evening. I'd like to call our regular city council meeting to order. We've got quite a crowd here tonight, that's exciting. And welcome everyone that's here in attendance and welcome to any that are listening or viewing this on Internet or TV. Our first item of business is our roll call. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Ziprick.
Present.
Councilman Peterson.
Present.
Councilman Pepezcu.
Here.
Mayor Pretembury Rigsby.
Here.
Mayor Brower.
Here.
All present.
Our invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilman Pepezcu.
Heavenly Father, thank you for being with us here today. Help us as we make decisions that we may do them in a way that we honor you and the rest of the citizens who place their trust in us. Please bless us and be with all those out there who may need us more than you we do. In Jesus' name, amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any items to be added or deleted?
There are none, Mayor.
Thank you. This brings us to the portion of the agenda for any items that are not on the formal agenda. Again, if you have an item that's scheduled, would ask you to please wait for that time slot. If there's an item not on the agenda that you would like to bring to our attention now is that opportunity. Seeing none, we will move on to scheduled items and going to get to the very first item that I think we've got the crowd here for, and that's introduction of new fire personnel. And I'd like to turn the microphone over to Chief Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Tonight is really, I guess, a second wave that was somewhat predicted by our group when the mayor assigned Councilman Rigsby and then Peterson to work with the task force to look at some issues in the fire department. The number-one issue that we looked at was our workforce stability and identified within a period of months what kind of turnover we were going to have in the department. As you'll recall, beginning of the year, the beginning of that, the first wave of that happened, we replaced the department's leadership and added some talent in the department. I can tell you that since that time, some transformation within the department, some culture. I couldn't be prouder of what is happening. Hopefully, you're sensing that in the community as well. I hear it on a regular basis. But tonight, I stand before you to introduce you to a group of guys, a little bit smaller, but the second wave that is a result of some retirements and unfortunate passing of Captain Padilla, but no less important and somewhat symbolic of what we feel is a completion to the stabilization of our workforce and bringing a group of people that are committed to be career employees and serve the citizens of Loma Linda. We did have a badge ceremony, a badge presentation, a little while back within the department when these gentlemen started. This was intended to happen a few weeks ago, but was delayed by windstorms and fire assignments. But again, we did want to introduce our new employees to the community and yourselves and again, thank the whole department for, again, the effort, the commitment to this community and what we're building that's going on right now in the department. So, I'm going to introduce, first of all, two promotions and then four new recruits to the department. And I'll ask, first of all, Captain Scott Tappo to come forward. Scott began his fire service career with the Apple Valley Fire Department as a firefighter in 1996. Scott joined the Loma Linda Fire Department in 2003 as a firefighter/paramedic. Within a year, had promoted to the engineer ranks and in August of this year was tested and promoted to the captain rank. Scott currently serves on medic engine 251 on the B shift under Battalion Chief Jones, has specialty assignments within the department as hazmat specialist, one of only two left after some of our departures. Has also headed up the department's honor guard and oversees our safety gear, safety equipment program within the department. Scott is also one of our leaders within training. Scott has both experience in truck company operations and medic engine operations and very proud to present Scott as a captain to the council and the citizens. Scott's promotion opened up a natural slot in the engineer ranks. So, I'd like to invite Engineer Aaron Mulhall. Aaron knew he had a passion for this career early. At 15 years old, joined the Temecula Fire Explorer post and as soon as he could, got into Fire Academy at Santa Ana and then joined the Pachanga Fire Department as a firefighter in 2003. Aaron then joined our ranks as a firefighter in 2005 and in August of this year, in the place of Captain Tappo's position, promoted to the rank of engineer. Aaron is already in his time here, become a member of the urban search and rescue team. He's also certified in his communications tech, which is one kind of specialty we've seen in our transition in the department that was leaving the department was critical for us to get someone to kind of anchor in our communications planning. Aaron has solidified that. Also oversees the small equipment program within the department and actually together, Captain Tappo and Aaron were part of spearheading, certainly something I'm very proud of and hopefully you've seen them, as well as the fire department's honor guard, which is new for us this year. So, thank you for all those efforts, Aaron and Scott, in doing that. And Aaron, you're certainly assigned to a lot of things here in the department and we appreciate your efforts. I'm going to invite Captain Larry Nochman forward. Little interesting story. Captain Nochman, his name had been coming up in the department from time to time. Some of the outstanding people that had come through, some are in other organizations now, some of them are right here, had, when you looked at their background, had all served in this explorer post in Temecula. And I had heard comments about this explorer post through the years of, that's a very regimented, regimented group of young people and this guy that drives them is just, I mean, they're very committed to what they do. It was exciting and a pleasure for us to see the name of Captain Larry Nochman in our application pool as someone that, who we had seen develop really high-quality fire recruits, firefighters, in terms of their firefighting skill, but beyond that, in terms of their commitment to the communities they served in some of the extracurricular activities, which is really part of the heart of a small fire department. This group that Larry's part of, the next four gentlemen, as new members to the department, they may recall a question that I asked specifically and it stemmed from kind of the plan that we architected in looking for not people just to get their foot in the fire service, but people that want to come to this town and serve this community. So, I don't know if Larry, you remember a very specific question, why do you, not why do you want to be in the fire service? That's the textbook question. Why do you want to be in the fire service in Loma Linda? So, that was, the next four people that I'm introducing to you, that was one of our, and I think some of the challenges we had faced, that was one of our core questions and desires to bring to the department and certainly proud of what we brought out of that process and I think you will be here as well. Anyway, Captain Nochman began his career in the fire department in 1993 in Riverside County, promoted up through the ranks with Riverside County Fire from firefighter to engineer and served in communities such as Canyon Lake, Quail Valley, Temecula, Moreno Valley. Captain Nochman spent time on both engine companies, truck companies within Riverside County and then promoted to the rank of captain with the Pachanga Fire Department. As I mentioned, he also was the head and ran the Temecula Fire Explorer post for five years and was very committed to the development of youth and young firefighters. Captain Nochman spent five years at the rank of captain with Pachanga until this opportunity with the Loma Linda Fire Department came open and Larry, again, joined our ranks and is assigned to the A shift on medic engine 251 under Battalion Chief Roddy. Larry is married, his wife is Michelle, nine years, nine and a half years, sorry, and together have two beautiful girls, Alexis, Tiffany. Larry also has two older daughters, Ashley and Brianna. His wife is very involved as leaders in 4H and showing poultry throughout California with a 4H club and their daughters and also enjoys lots of desert sand sports and river weekends with his friends and family. So, Larry, congratulations and welcome to the City of Loma Linda.[717.82][717.82](Applause). Next, I'd like to introduce Captain Scott Daniels. You're allowed. That's okay. We're proud too. Captain Daniels was born and raised in Southern California as well, currently resides close in Ucaipa with his wife of 10 years and son Cole. Scott began his fire service career, again, very young. He knew where he wanted to head at 14 years old, joined the county fire explorer post. As soon as he was 18, he began as a paid call firefighter and he actually came to the City of Loma Linda as a reserve firefighter shortly after that. Scott was offered a temporary assignment with county fire and then joined the US Forest Service. After spending one season with the Forest Service, he realizes he wanted to work for a municipality and city firefighting and went to the City of Hemet. Scott promoted up from the firefighter ranks to the engineer ranks with the City of Hemet. Scott, I know very directly, was on their short list of people to fill the rank of captain within that department. Scott had been aware of some of the transformation within our department and I think was proud of what was happening here and wanted to be a part of it. Also remembered his times here previously as a reserve firefighter and it was desirable to him to, in a way, come back home and be a little closer to home and family in Ucaipa. Scott also has a degree in fire science from Columbia University. He continues to instruct in truck company operations, firefighting strategies and tactics to firefighters across the nation. Scott's favorite activities include boating, fishing, and the high sierras with his family. And again, Scott specifically indicated he's very glad to return to Loma Linda at the rank of captain and looks forward to spending his career here with our department. So, congratulations and welcome back.[857.51][857.51](Applause). Josh, Josh is a firefighter, recently joined us and after having began his fire service career in Crafton Hills College in 2002. In his fire service career, he also began at a very young age of 14 with an explorer post in Steve Colton. I actually remember spent time with Josh when I was a firefighter in the City of Colton and remember Josh as a very committed explorer and with a lot of passion in the fire service. He became a paid call with San Bernardino County Fire Department in the City of Grand Terrace and also worked as a helicopter support manager for CAL FIRE. After those seasons, he took a limited-term firefighter slot with San Bernardino County Fire and in the City of Grand Terrace. Since then, he's been to Fort Irwin Fire Department in a full-time slot and then thinks finally is somewhat relieved that he's found a home in the fire service and indicates a desire to put his roots down and serve this community for a long time. So, Josh, congratulations and welcome.[953.63][953.63](Applause). And our last piece of the puzzle, Chris Crowell, firefighter Crowell. Chris also grew up locally, here in Riverside County. As a young man, played lots of sports and outdoor activities and was very involved in his student government, somewhat developed the passion for government work and the fire service. Chris also joined the Temecula Fire Post under the direction of Captain Nochman. Chris has had several different jobs in his life, but indicates that nothing compares to the passion and satisfaction he feels in working in the fire service as a firefighter. Chris is a second-generation firefighter in his family, has been involved in several fire agencies, including the Santa Ana Fire Department, Pachanga, Riverside City Fire Department, and were his next stop. And also another pretty direct and frank discussion with Chris indicating what he feels as a home with his fire department and desire to put roots down and serve even a smaller fire department with the family feel. So, Chris also currently resides in Murrieta with his girlfriend Jessica and very proud of the accomplishments so far. He's very proud to be a member of this department and this city. He also thanks his parents and his sisters, also Captain Nochman and Jessica, for helping him through the stages to get to his end goal here with this department. So, Chris, congratulations and welcome.[1065.58][1065.58](Applause). So, I think that sums up our introductions and again, a group that I'm proud and I think, again, demonstrates that second piece of that puzzle in that plan that we architected and thank you gentlemen for your commitment here and we look forward to our future together.
Thank you, Chief Bender, and welcome from city council to Scott, Aaron, Larry, Josh, Chris. Appreciate you coming on board with us and want to thank the rest of your crew that provides a faithful service to help protect the public safety. Have a lot of citizens that feel public safety with police, fire is really by far what we're here for and all the other things we do could fall by the wayside if we don't make sure those operations are taken care of. And also want to thank council members Peterson and Rigsby for their hard work and working with Chief Bender on this important project. So, thanks everyone and have a good evening. I know most of you would rather go home than listen about landscape maintenance and I don't blame you.[1164.78][1164.78](Laughter). Floyd?
Yeah, just one quick comment. I just want to thank the chief too for the leadership that he's performed and there's one other thing that the whole community ought to be interested in. We have a very professional fire department, a great group of committed people who are very talented, a department that cost the city a lot of money, and it's a group of people who we wish would never do a thing.[1192.15][1192.15](Laughter). That's what we wish. Of course, we know that won't happen. They're here for our safety, but if you guys never did anything, we'd be happy.[1199.15][1199.15](Laughter).
All right. All right. Let's resume our agenda and move on to item number two. This is an update to apprise council and community in regards to some litigation. We're not giving the city attorney any directions, so it's, you know, sometimes you'll see us adjourn the closed session to handle confidential attorney-client issues, but this is intended merrily to keep us all apprised of where we stand with litigation and just kind of an update so everyone is aware where we do stand on this. And this is the Friends of Loma Linda versus number of parties, et cetera. Mr. City Attorney?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item, as you indicated, does not require any action by the city council this evening. It's simply to report on the status publicly of the lawsuit entitled Friends of Loma Linda versus Virgil et al. This was a lawsuit that arose from the two referenda petitions that were circulated in the city regarding specific plans known as Orchard Park and University Village. The city received those petitions, found that there were sufficient signatures and took action to place those referenda on the ballot for a vote of the people. However, this lawsuit intervened. The lawsuit was brought by a group known as Friends of Loma Linda that is known to be affiliated with or aligned with the interests of certain developers of those specific plans. The city didn't take an active role in the litigation. The litigation went forth between this group, Friends of Loma Linda, and the real parties in interest, who are the circulators of the referenda petitions. The trial court ruled that the referenda petitions were invalid because the court felt that they had not included as attachments the full text of the various ordinances and resolutions that were adopted by the city as part of approval of those specific plan projects. And so, based upon that finding, the trial court ordered the registrar voters to remove from the ballot these two referenda petitions so that they were not voted on by the people at that time. After the deadline for the election had passed, there was an appeal of that trial court decision and that went through the system. It took quite a bit of time for all this to take place. I think we go back to March of 2006 when the lawsuit was originally filed. But the Court of Appeal ultimately ruled that, in its opinion, the petitions did have an adequate copy of the resolutions in question and that there was no violation of state law in that regard and therefore, the Court of Appeal ordered that the two referenda petitions go back on the next regular election ballot for the City of Loma Linda. Now, following that order, the real parties in interest apparently had some discussions, the attorneys representing the two sides, and the developers of the two specific plans agreed with a request to the Court of Appeal to modify the decision. And the way they modified the decision was to give the city, once again, the option of either placing these two specific plans back on the ballot for a vote, or the city could take an action to revoke the specific plans. That was an option that the city had originally when the referenda petitions were presented and so, the Court of Appeal, in adopting that alternative, agreed that it made sense for the city to review that decision in effect and to have the option to simply repeal all of these relevant ordinances and resolutions that were necessary to the two specific plans that were adopted. And so, the attorney representing the real parties in interest, the attorney in effect for the proponents of the two referenda, did not stipulate to giving the city that option, but did not oppose it and in fact, recommended some language that would accomplish that. That exact language was adopted by the Court of Appeal and is now part of the final order of the Court of Appeal. Now, procedurally, the matter has been concluded in the Court of Appeal and a document known as remitter has been submitted back to the trial court and that became effective October 21st, a week ago. The appeal is now complete. The case is now back to the trial court with directions from the Court of Appeal to issue a new judgment, a new order, consistent with the opinion of the Court of Appeal. And what that will require is that the trial court issue a new judgment which will require that these two specific plans go back on the ballot for a vote, or that the city revoke them, repeal all the relevant ordinances and specific plans. And specifically, there were four different actions that the city council took as to each specific plan and if the city chooses to revoke either or both of those specific plans, the city is required by the decision to revoke all four of the supporting ordinances and resolutions as to each of the two specific plans. So, that decision from the trial court has not occurred yet. We expect shortly, we'll be hearing from the trial court as to the process for doing that. Most likely, they will invite the attorney for the proponents of the referenda to submit a proposed judgment and that will circulate and once it's signed by the judge, a certain period of time will pass before it will become final. But at that point, the city will then be ordered to exercise one of those two options, either place the referenda on the ballot for a vote as to the two specific plans, or revoke the two specific plans, including all the supporting ordinances and resolutions. So, that is the status of that appeal, of that lawsuit, and we will be facing that choice within a matter of a few weeks, I expect. And that will come back on your agenda for action at that time and it's, of course, premature to give any direction or make a decision on that at this time. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I hope I didn't bore you too much with the procedural history there.
A technical matter, is it, in the ordinary course of events when there's no lawsuit filed against a referenda petition, there's a 30-day window in which the city council either places it on the ballot or reverses the applicable ordinances, correct? And so when the final decision of the court comes down to send it to us for that decision, does that 30-day window run again? And if so, does it render the ordinances that were passed valid, subject to being reversed? Or does it put it back in the situation which would happen after the 30-day period when a city council has determined that something should go on the ballot? Does it render them as though they had never been passed? So it's kind of a technical question. Are they currently now as though they had been passed and are subject to reversal, or are they now as though they had never been passed and must muster in a political campaign and a vote of the people in order to be deemed to have been passed?
Well, I think the effect of all the litigation now is that we have two specific plans that are subject to the referenda process now, and therefore, they are stayed from implementation. We cannot go forward with those if we chose to try to rush forward with implementation. No, I don't believe we can do that. But as a practical matter, the, these two specific plans have been rendered moot to some extent by the intervening adoption of Measure V. The applicants for the two specific plans have acknowledged that they need to be substantially amended before they could go forward under Measure V. And their suggestion was to the Court of Appeal that it made more sense simply to repeal the entire specific plans and start from scratch with a new proposal. And that new proposal will, of course, be subject to Measure V and will have to comply with every requirement of Measure V. The Court of Appeal was apparently persuaded by that argument as a practical matter. There was no opposition to it stated by any of the parties to the lawsuit. And so I would say that technically, these specific plans are not operative now. They're stayed by operation of law from going forward, but they were inconsistent with Measure V anyway already. We knew that, and the applicants for the specific plans have been fully aware of that. So it seems to be the practical alternative that was provided to the city to simply repeal these ordinances and resolutions and start over with something that is consistent with current state of affairs, including Measure V. That's a long answer to a question that, you know, from a technical standpoint, there, some people might dispute certain points of that. But from a practical standpoint, these specific plans are moot. They've been overcome by events in various respects, and they are subject to the effect of the referenda petitions at this point, in any event.
In which case, they were, they are as though they had never been passed, and they're in a limbo state?
Well, they're in a limbo state, yes. They cannot go forward. I wouldn't quite go so far as to say it's as if they were never adopted by the city because if the city chose to place them on the ballot, and if the voters approved these specific plans, then they could go forward, but subject to, of course, the intervening changes in law, including Measure V. So they would have to be modified and reworked substantially to comply with Measure V. But some form of the existing specific plans could go forward if the voters chose to do that, but it would be more practical to start afresh, I believe.
That's a very interesting question. You know, it would seem to me like it would be the most sensible thing to do, just to simply repeal them all. But, okay, the voters passed Measure V, and so it's the law. Now, what if the voters voted for the plans? It's not to vote them up, but vote them in. Is that, that doesn't take, that's not the same level as a Measure V, and it would be a new change? It would, how does that, that's an interesting point.
Well, the specific plans would not supersede Measure V, in my opinion.
Even at a vote of the people?
No, because Measure V was an amendment to the general plan, and so if the specific plans go forward, they were not vested because there hadn't been any construction, so they would have to comply with Measure V.
But, yes, I can see that, but even if they were voted on by the people? Would that be, I mean, would somebody?
Yes, but I see what you're saying. It's another vote, so does the later vote prevail?
Yeah, that's what I thought about, that'd be funny.
I don't believe it would because at the time this all started, there was no Measure V, so it couldn't be argued that the voters intended to repeal Measure V in any extent by approving something that had occurred previously.
So it's, just in general, just in theory, if there's a law like Measure V is, and a project or something, it doesn't even have to be a development law, but a project comes up, that conflicts with that law, which was voted in by the people, but this other thing is also voted in by the people, which one rules?
Well, you'd have to look at the language of the competing actions and see if there's some indication of the intent of the voters. And I don't think that would be practical in this case because there was no Measure V at the time of the specific plans, and so you couldn't, there's no language in there to deal with this eventuality.
Well, I mean, I'm even thinking of state initiatives, but let's, okay, let's take a little different point. Let's say that a developer came up with a plan, and that plan, in some way, violated some law that we already have in town, let's say, a piece of Measure V. And that plan was put to a vote of the people, and it didn't come before, like this one, you said this one was in place, but it was a new one. Can a, could a project that would be voted by the people supersede a law like Measure V, which is also voted by the people? In other words, can the people vote conflicts of law?
Well, yes, but in that case, the second action would normally be worded in such a way as to make it clear to what extent it was going to supersede or repeal a prior enactment, and I don't think anything like that occurred in this situation.
Yeah, that's interesting.
There was no intent to repeal Measure V when the specific plans were adopted because there was no Measure V.
Sure, sure.
And if I could play my amateur attorney interpretation of your question, too. You know, in theory, let's say you put it on the ballot, voters approved the specific plans, they're not in absolute conflict with each other, obviously, the development that resulted. If the original specific plan was modified by Measure V, it would be changed substantially, and I think a lot of people would argue it's kind of silly to try and, you know, make those wholesale changes based on the older plan, but it's not like they're totally mutually exclusive.
Yeah, interesting.
But, anyway.
So at some point, then, we will get a decision from the trial court. I will notify you when that occurs, and I presume we will want to agendize that for consideration of the action that you will take at that time.
If we should choose to put it on the ballot, you mentioned a regularly scheduled election, I believe, were the terms you used. What would constitute a regularly scheduled election?
Well, I think it could be either a special election called by the city, or it could be any election that is held countywide that is taking place within the city. Those are all appropriate elections.
What would be the purpose of holding an election? What effect would the election have? As I understand it, it would have none.
Well, I suppose it would be some indication of the intent of the voters, but...
It would have no legal effect, though, would it?
It wouldn't create a final project that could go forward. It would still, it would create a project that's inconsistent with our general plan as modified by Measure V, and so it would, it would still require work.
Well, that's the point, is if, if you put something like this on the ballot, and I know there's been one indication, somebody made a comment in the press, that it'd be nice to have the voters vote on this, but my question is, if there's no effect from the election, is it simply an opinion poll? Because it really cannot change Measure V.
No, and it can't require the project to be built. When the developers of the specific plans who presented those applications originally have said they are not going to build that project anymore. So it would be voting on a project that there's no chance of going forward. It would seem to be an unnecessary action to expend the, obviously, it's somewhat expensive to have an election, and if you're voting as to whether or not to go forward with a project that would not go forward in any event, arguably, it's unnecessary.
Thank you.
My understanding is that if a project goes to an election, then there's a certain lockout period during which no project can be submitted, and that when a project is submitted, it has to be substantially different from the original. Is that, does that apply in this circumstance if it went to election, and does that apply if it's just a mere reversal by the council?
It applies in either case. The one-year period would start from either the action of the council to revoke the specific plan or the effective date of the election. So by, there's some potential benefit to repealing the action sooner. That one-year period would begin to run sooner, but it wouldn't really have any, well, I could argue that it wouldn't really have any practical effect in any event because the same project could not be resubmitted because it would still be inconsistent with Measure V in it. It wouldn't be approved because it would not comply with our general plan at that point. So in either event, it would have to be a different project, substantially different than the prior project.
To follow up on Dusty's question, I think what he's asking is if, say, the election was scheduled in two years, would the project, the first project's gone, but would the landowner be allowed to submit any project, even if it was different? Or would the landowner be frankly locked out of ever proposing something from the land until a year after the election? In other words, they might be tied up for three years and not be able to do anything with their land, no matter what they proposed? Is that, that's what you're driving at?
Yeah, the developer or the city could propose a new specific plan that is different at any time. They would not be prohibited from doing so by the law. They simply could not submit the same project.
But the same project can't be submitted practically anyway under Measure V?
Correct.
So then there really is no lockout of the landowner from proposing something different?
No.
Okay.
Well, it doesn't require, it doesn't say that you can't submit the same project. It says you have to submit something substantially different. And that would, you believe that the changes that Measure V causes to these projects is substantially different in and of itself?
Well, I haven't really analyzed that specifically, but that would, Measure V certainly would require some substantial changes to the projects as previously proposed. To what extent the developer would make other changes, you know, it's hard to know. Whether or not they would even submit a specific plan of the scale and scope that they had previously is unknown at this point. Different developers might come in with smaller projects completely different than what was proposed previously. We may not even have a new specific plan proposed for the entire area unless the city chooses to pursue that. There's no requirement that anybody propose anything at this point.
But, to my understanding, the differences imposed by Measure V are primarily for the single-family residences. There were no building height issues in this project because the city had a 35-foot building height before Measure V and a 35-foot building height after Measure V. So most of the change that was imposed was to increase the single-family residences to 7,200 square feet, minimum lot size. So is it your opinion that if we reverse the projects, they could go ahead with the other aspects of the project, and the diminution in numbers of single-family residences would constitute a substantial change?
Well, that would be a decision for the council to make at that point. I wouldn't be prepared tonight to render a formal opinion on that. I think, though, as a practical matter, if you change one aspect of the project, it's like squeezing the balloons, things change elsewhere, so it would be very unlikely that you would get an identical project with only a change to the single-family units. But that would be something for the, for a developer to propose, and I don't know. I haven't spoken to the developers about what they would do differently this time, if they, if they even submit a new project. It's up to them to submit what they choose, and the city would have to evaluate that and review it in light of Measure V and take a look at whatever changes are proposed, whatever new project is proposed, to see if it is substantially different. So that determination might involve a lot of different factors that I can't speculate about at this point.
Question, but then, if you can't submit a, in any case, whatever, if you can't submit a project that's, until it's substantially different, who is the person, or who is the group that makes the final decision? This is substantially different, and therefore, it can go forward. Who makes that decision? Us?
The city council, of course. Any decision you make is subject to litigation if somebody chose to do that.
Sure, of course. Mm-hmm. Yeah, but we make that decision that's substantially different.
Yes.
Unless there's any other burning questions, I think we will conclude this item and obviously ask staff to put this on the agenda as soon as we have further instructions from the trial court based on what we've heard tonight. So appreciate the update, and again, just want to try and keep everyone informed where we are and let everyone know what our status is on that. So thank you. Next item is a presentation by Southern California Edison related to a rebate program. And, I believe I saw Ms. Powell here?
Well, let me do a little report.
Are you?
During the past two years, the city have been participating in Edison demand bidding program, where we reduced the electrical consumption during the peak summer month of June to October. And this year, we have participated in 15 events where we bid into the Edison to actually reduce the power consumption. And by doing so, the Edison gave us a credit for the energy we don't use. And so, this is funny, but that's the way the program works. And since the city is one of the major electrical consumption from pumping the water into the reservoir, so what we usually do is we make sure that the city pump the water the night before into the reservoir and store it and use that during the day. And by doing so, we reduce the energy consumption. Also, we have our staff here, Jeff Peterson, he's the one who bid for the program. He's the one who bid for the program and walk around the city hall, make sure we turn off the light and we don't overuse the power. And we have Beverly Powell with Edison and also Gerald with Edison to present the mayor with, with the check for the credit that we don't use. The power is $43,609.98.
Mayor and council, you do know me, Beverly Powell, in public affairs. But I do want to introduce to you Gerald Wilson. He is the Edison account executive who has the city of Loma Linda. So his whole job is to find ways for the city to save money with their energy bills. So in three months, this is what Gerald has helped you do with the assistance of Jeff Peterson in Public Works. And so, anyway, three months' time, that's not bad. So, but anyway, Gerald's still working on other, other ways for the cities to save money. Gerald, do you have anything to share?
I think you've pretty much said it all. We're just gonna continue to work, move forward and not only participate in demand response, but other energy efficiency projects.
Just to read the total here, again, that check that we're looking at, pretty impressive, And really want to thank Jarb and Jeff and all the other staff that have been involved in doing this. City council stand up here and pretend we get all the credit, but we don't. It's the staff that's done the hard work and we really appreciate that. And it's saving all the citizens dollars on their bills. It's real money. So that's terrific and I look forward to continue work to help preserve everyone's budget.
Mr. Mayor, I want to join in thanking you folks for your work with us. If we have citizens who would like to work with Edison on, say, things like solar and we're work, obviously you're aware the city's working on a citywide solar project. But if individuals want more information, would you be the right folks to talk with? Or is there a special solar expert in this region that they can talk with or?
Actually, if they want to talk to us, fine. In fact, I'll give them my phone number and I'll steer them in the right direction based on what they're looking at. In fact, tonight was a, for homeowners, was an information meeting that Edison was holding for people, just residential customers who are interested in solar, just finding out what does it take and find out if it's worth it for them. So that was a free one that was being, but the, the, the information meeting was at, was at Cathedral City tonight, yeah. So, but anyway, let me just give, since you do televise your, your meetings. My name is Beverly Powell. My phone number is area code 909-307-6742. And homeowners can, or even business customers can look online to actually get them initially started to get information. www.sce.com, again, www.sce.com. And then you can look under the solar, what, CSI?
Yeah, slash CSI.
Yeah.
It'll take them directly to solar.
Yeah. Yes, California Solar Initiative, that's what the CSI stands for.
Thank you.
Jarb, did you want to say something else?
Yes, I want to add one more thing, that we just received a grant for $250,000 for the city to purchase and upgrade our water system equipment to help us reduce the power consumption even more.
Hand crank pumps.
Very good. All right, thank you.
Yeah, just one other thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I want you to promise you keep, do everything you can to keep that guy on the job. You bring a check like that, must have been all, man. You're looking good.
All right, thank you.
And at the end of the year, it might be exciting to have staff bring back a total figure of this program plus with our new solar electric generation venture to say, probably going to be getting up into several hundred thousand dollars of electrical savings that we are now accruing on an annual basis thanks to the efforts of everyone involved. And that's, you know, Everett Dirksen, famous senator from Illinois, used to say, you know, a dollar here and a dollar there, pretty soon adds up to real money. And that's, that's very impressive. Everett Dirksen was from Illinois, wasn't he? Did I say Wyoming?
He was Illa-Illinois, I believe.
Was he?
I know, I'm not state, not exactly quoting his phrase.
Everett, Everett Dirksen.
Yeah, it's my paraphrase of it.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, let's move on to item number four. And again, the one everyone's been waiting for. And this relates to Landscape Maintenance District Number One with the Meridian Project in Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is recommended the city council approve the council bill number R-2008-53 and order annexation into the Landscape Maintenance District for the fiscal year 2008-2009 and order assessment and collection of the assessment for the fiscal year 2008-2009. And this is for the Meridian Project, which is the commercial project on the south side of Barton Road, just west of Newport. And city clerk has the ballot and the petition from the property owner.
I will now formally open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this agenda item? Seeing none and having no slips, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions, comments from staff or council on this item? Seeing no questions or comments, looking for action on this council bill R-2008-53. Looking for...
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? It carries unanimously. Next item's our consent calendar. Just wanted to, I don't know if we need to pull, but at least make some comments on eight, B, and C. Anybody else have any items they want to either talk about or pull formally?
I, I had some questions regarding eight, A.
Okay, let's just pull item eight. Anything else or shall we take action? Looking for a motion for the remaining, during the consent calendar?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? No? Carries. Item eight, the one item we pulled from the consent calendar, Councilman Papescu, eight, A.
Just a quick question. I was looking at the report and I noticed that, by the way, this is actually regarding expenditures to repave a number of streets. And it was put up for a bid and the lowest bid was for $384,288. The staff is recommending that we allocate plus or minus 15% in case there's any unforeseen circumstances. I know that traditionally, we only allocate 10% plus or minus. I'm just curious as to why is it 15% in this particular case?
Thank you. As you're aware, this, this street are in the Peterson Track, which is a county area that the city annexed about a year and a half ago. The street in pretty bad shape. And what we plan to do is install the, the street light and grind existing pavement and then overlay with the new pavement. But what happened is, right next to it, we have orange growth that sometime the, the people who water, the growth, have the water spill over and contaminated the base material. So we don't know what actually can happen until we actually grind off the pavement and to see the condition of the subbase. And that's why the reason is 15% instead of normal 10%.
Is the contingency, does it ever come in minus?
No, sir.
Why do we even put that minus on there?
Oh, well, because I rounded the number off to near a dollar, that's why I...
Oh, okay, plus or minus 50, okay.
Yes, yes, I just round off the number.
I didn't think they were going to come in under budget.
When do you anticipate that this project will be completed?
If you award a contract tonight, I probably start construction within two weeks and it should take about a month, till a month and a half. And the reason it's a month and a half because it'd take a little while to order the streetlight pole. But the resident along Peterson Track has been looking forward for this improvement for many years.
We, we're still planning on putting streetlights on those streets, correct?
Yes, that's part of the logic.
So you combined the contract for the street with this, the street lighting with the repaving?
Yes, sir.
I see.
And the reason for that is, is to save the asphalt. Because if you put in the, cut up the street to put in the conduit for streetlight, the contractor had to put in the asphalt as a temporary before we paved the street. This way, they just grind the street, dig the trench, install a conduit and come back and pave the street at one time.
I see, thank you.
Council Peters?
Yeah, question. I guess two questions. Mr. Attorney, I presume that I don't have a conflict of interest. I sold my house on Chula Vista Street 25 years ago. But the second question is a serious one, and that is the issue of sewers in there?
Right now, there's no sewer in that track.
Right. And when would be the plans to put them in? And is there anything, I mean, what I'm worried about is putting a lot of beautiful paving and having to dig it up and put a sewer in it.
And the reason for that is, is because it's just a restricted area that if you put in the sewer, it's only served this Peterson Track. And to do it right, we had to come out with the assessment district to assess the property owner within this subdivision to put in the sewer. And it will cost up to $8,000 to $10,000 per home. One is to pay for the sewer capacity fee to the city of San Bernardino. Second is to cut the street to install the sewer lateral. Third is to abandon the existing septic system. And fourth is to install the sewer lateral from the septic system into the city main. And that will take a little while longer and had to go to the voter of that, those resident to vote for the assessment district.
So the chance of that happening very soon isn't very big, and so...
Yes, that's why I'm doing this pavement rehab first.
Just editorial comment, I think it is. Somewhat frustrating that we as a city have to pick up a lot of these costs that have been a result of deferred maintenance. We're thrilled and happy to have some of these annexations such as Brenmar and Peterson Track. And I think unquestionably makes sense in the long run. But county has left us with a lot of deferred maintenance I do believe that we are now having to take care of. Item eight, B, just simply brought up a question. Obviously, as we've closed Stewart Street and have some changes in traffic patterns, there's some issues. Also wondering if we've addressed the, or could address the signal at Anderson and University. I've noticed with that new cross-street open that seems like the green on the Anderson stays that way for long periods of time and the traffic really backs up now that, now that we have that as an alternate route to Stewart. So I'd like you to, if you could, take a look at that as well. Any other issues or comments on that particular item?
That's true, I've seen that too, so.
Okay. Then eight, C, any, we talked about this at our last meeting. We have some specific figures. Any other comments or updates, any item or just the budget as shown?
Yes, sir, and that's why I'm glad that you gave me a year, I mean, not year, a week and a half to go get the bid. We received a bid for $20,800 to relocate the locomotive from where it is today to the new site at Heritage Park. We also received a bid not to exceed, or not yet, the bid for grading. We have, we had a pre-bid meeting two days ago, I'm sorry, yesterday, Monday. And the bid will come in this Thursday to grade the pad for the locomotive and the pad for the coalhouse that we're going to relocate from Redlands Boulevard to the site right next to the locomotive. The bid expected to come in this Thursday. We received the price to put in the panel, track panel, it's coming, the panel. We plan to get two of them and to lay it out on a pad so we can put the locomotive on top. And that was this, this price of four.
Question?
Sure.
I got a question about that that just occurred to me. We have a major railroad that runs through this town that we like and we put up with it and we have our loves and hate relationship. Would it be useful to approach that railroad and ask them if they'd be willing to donate two panels and help us get that engine over here? Is that a possibility?
The problem is the time restriction. You want to have this done by, by November 9th. That's why, that's why I pushed so hard to get this thing to the, to the council for approval tonight, sir, so.
Yeah. But I mean, I wonder if, would it hurt to at least make a phone call? I wonder to these guys, I mean, they got a lot of these panels sitting down. I can see them along the railroad track all the time and say, hey, come on, give us a couple of those things. You make enough trouble in this town. Give us some goodwill and give us a couple of those panels. I think worth a phone call at least. Yes, I can, do you know anybody? I'd be happy to call and U.P. and...
I, I take it, we can talk tomorrow on maybe some ideas. We certainly could try. And I gather, I don't have a conflict now that the locomotive has been donated to the city. So now we're just beyond that issue. So I'll be glad to do what I can to explore that. There are some people who know more contacts that way than, than I might. And I might talk with some of them and coordinate with you, Jarb, if that's okay.
Yeah, little sign there saying donated by, you know, Southern Pacific.
Part of, one, one thing that those who have dealt with railroads will tell you is they have very strong bureaucracies. Is that a fair statement, Jarb?
Yes, sir.
Almost as bad as city government, huh?
We could have a competition. But we could work, we could work, we can work on it.
The only other issue that I've had brought up to me, talking to several individuals about this project, everybody's excited with the concept of the mock packing house, railroad line, transportation mock-up and exhibit. But had one person yesterday asked me, and I didn't get a chance to call Jim Ship or anyone, but saying, you know, would it be better to have a locomotive that was more indicative of the heyday period of citrus and their vision was back in the 20s and 30s, which would imply more of a steam engine? I don't know, just had that question brought up, so I'll put it, put it on the table.
I would, I would try to respond by saying that California Eastern Railway did not buy a steam locomotive. It bought a diesel that now has turned out to be historical. And that company was delighted to donate it to the city. If it had a steam locomotive, it would also have been delighted to donate that. And if it comes up with one, I'm sure it'd be happy to approach the city. But right now, this is what it has. The other thing you have to recognize, and a serious note, if you go back to the photographs of Redlands in this period, the citrus industry was actually pretty strong at the time this locomotive was running. There's some pictures in the 19, I've seen aerial photo of Redlands in 1950, 52. And it was packed, they had two rail lines in there, this SP and Santa Fe. And they had, this is going to portray the SP part, which is the one that went through Brenmar and Loma Linda, of course. But they had many, many refrigerator cars there. And so this would be a good representative exhibit of that era. But certainly, we can keep our eyes open if you have a stomach for more and try to find a locomotive. But you may be satisfied with, with one diesel locomotive. But we can always look for a steam one if we find one. And then this group can debate whether that's a good addition. How does that sound? Fair?
No, I think...
You can always consider another addition.
I think that's a reasonable point. And obviously, you could pick any arbitrary time, time element. And I think that is an important factor to, to highlight that certainly it is very consistent with, with when citrus industry was very active here.
There's one other thing, there's one other thing you probably all know on this council and probably most of the public here knows, is that in this very area, there was an Arrow Gauge Railroad that ran down Mission Road. And there was a junction between the standard Narrow Gauge Railroad at what's called Motor Junction, which happens to be just about where the new Arco Station is. So if you wanted to get very elaborate, you could also try... try to come up with a narrow-gauge car. But I think that's overdoing it. I think right now, we've bit off about as much as we can handle.
Very good. Are we ready to take action on item eight from the consent calendar?
Quick question.
Sure.
I noticed that we're bidding on the grading of the site, but we're not bidding on the final site prep. And it looks like SBM Contracting is going to be given $6,500 for that. And then associate engineering is being given $2,500 just for staking the site. I'm just curious why those couldn't be bunched up together and actually put up for a bid with the actual grading of the site?
Yes, sir. The grading is, is something that we can bid, is just getting a grading contractor to come out and bid the project. SBM, his specialty is the one who actually put the track down on the surface, and that's what their specialty. And the reason I picked the associate engineer to do survey is associate engineer is the original engineer who did the boundary survey and the topographic survey for the site. And because we would like to know exactly why, where the city boundary is to the east, that's why I asked associate engineer to do the project.
And I'm hoping that that's the fee that we're going to be paying now and not having to go through it every single time we move an item there, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
This is one time.
Okay.
Very good. We have a motion to approve item eight. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. No further questions, comments, all in favor of item eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Number 10, we are set for a second reading and hopefully roll call vote related to development agreement for affordable housing and community development. I believe we'll introduce this item.
Dear Mayor and Council, this is simply the, the second reading of the ordinance for the development agreement that was previously approved by the council. And with my froggy voice, I'll leave that for you.
I move it.
We do have to, I guess, formally waive the reading of the proposed ordinance. Can I count that as a motion to do that?
That's fine.
Second.
And a second to waive the reading. All in favor of waiving the reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Just carry. And direct the clerk, please give us the reading by title only.
It is entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda Approving and Adopting the Development Agreement Between Fred Esbindo Gadea and Loretta Gadea Trustees and the City of Loma Linda." And you may vote. It passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number 11 is also similar format, second reading, and council can instruct the clerk to waive that if we so choose. And this is kind of a technical item for those that haven't paid attention. It's related to a time limit on some of the indebtedness of project area in a redevelopment agency. And again, just tidying up some paperwork and making sure we have everything done that needs to be done to comply with state laws and regulations. And city manager, city attorney, any comments on this item?
I think you summed it up quite nicely.
Okay. Our first action, again, as I understand it, will be to waive the reading of this item.
Move or waive reading.
Moved to waive the reading. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I'd like to hear it in its entirety. Just vote no.
We'll vote you down, hopefully, Floyd. All those in favor of only reading it, or waive the reading, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No?
It is entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda Eliminating the Time Limit on Establishment of Loans, Advances, and Indebtedness with Respect to the Redevelopment Plan for the Project Number Two Area of the Loma Linda Redevelopment Project Area and Making Other Findings in Connection Therewith." And you may vote. It passes unanimously.
Item number 12, appointment of planning commissioner to fulfill term until June 30, 2009. Again, very brief background, we've had some vacancies that have been filled on the planning commission. There was one remaining vacancy that, I think there's no one to blame but council. We did not make perfectly clear and so forth, some of the deadlines. We, at our last council meeting, clearly set out those deadlines so there would be no confusion. And I think hopefully, we've established those deadlines without a problem. It's actually, I think, a testimony to this community of the interest that has been generated by this with a number of applicants that have come in for this position. I'm really amazed how much interest and involvement from the community. So again, tonight, need to make this appointment. Seen several individuals here that have applications in. And at the risk of not missing anyone, let me just go down the list and make sure Fred Casarabi, would you be willing to please come forward for any questions and so forth from council? And initially, if you would, just introduce yourself and give us any thoughts and ideas and what, what made you do such a crazy thing, like apply for this?
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I live in the city of Loma Linda and I love the city. And I thought that my background provides me with some good information and challenging things that I have done in the past to serve the city. And in that capacity, I think I could. And my job is daytime job from 7:00 to 3:30 every day. So I could myself make myself available at any time, even though I know it's only once a month. And I have done in the past, I have done numerous jobs. I have run multimillion contracts. I have administered them. I have negotiated deals. I have negotiated with some complaints and have gone through many meetings, chaired meetings. So my backgrounds, I think, it talks for itself as far as being on the commission. So any questions, I'm more than happy to. Yes, sir.
Do you have any connections to Loma Linda University financially or otherwise?
No, I don't. No, sir.
Or your family?
No, sir.
Can you explain further? I noticed in your application that you talked, you mentioned that obviously your civil engineering, you have your professional licensing, which is, I might add, very difficult to get because I know my father, my brother just received one. It's actually harder than getting the bar or the medical boards, by the way. So I commend you for that. Can you tell us a bit more about what specifically you did at Caltrans in relationship to traffic?
I have worked in the traffic department myself when I was a junior civil engineer, when I started it close to 24 years ago, 25 years ago. And I did, actually, I started with traffic count in that department. And then I did work on some programs and calculated the capacity of the streets and the highways. And that was all time. Right now, we have computer programs that does that for us. But I'm very familiar with that.
Did you do any of those in this immediate area?
No, I have not. No, I did not.
Okay. So when you work for, you did that as part of your work with Caltrans?
Yes, sir.
So where did you do those traffic counts?
Oh, it was, it was like 20 some odd years ago, but we did them for the, for highways. I believe the one that I did was on Highway, on 15, I-15.
Okay. So it was in the immediate area, Southern California?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. I have worked for Caltrans in District Eight, so-called San Bernardino. I started here and that's where I am, since 1984.
Does any of your jobs currently entail projects that are close to Loma Linda?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are.
Can you give me more specifics as to where?
I have a number of contracts that I administer right now. We have on Highway 60. I have on Highway 79 in Hemet. I have one on I-10 in India. There are some that they are coming up, and I'm doing oversight on them. They are in Lake Elsinore, a couple of them there in Lake Elsinore.
So mostly in Riverside County from one end to the other?
Riverside County, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, sorry.
Just one. Have you had a chance in any other community to serve on any civic committees or that sort of thing?
No, sir, I haven't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. The next applicant we have on file is Ms. Palmieri. Don't believe is present. Do...
I just have a quick question. Were any of the applicants notified that they needed to be here for an interview?
The application indicated that they may be called for an interview. And they were all told when the council meeting would begin this evening.
Okay.
So we have her application in front of us and very thoughtfully has answered the questions that were provided.
Yeah, I noticed that she agrees with Floyd that she really likes the Ukaipa rock landscapes.
All right.
She also agrees with Mr. Ziprick about connecting the trail system to the Redlands Trail System.
I note that. That's excellent.
Very good. The next application we have on file was Lem, and I believe, I see him sitting here, and he was very faithful. Came to our, our meeting two weeks ago when we unfortunately had to postpone this due to, again, no fault of anyone's but the council. But would like to give Mr. Lealoa a chance to please introduce yourself to any that may not know you, which probably are very few, and give us your thoughts and ideas on serving on this position. And again, very carefully and detailed wise has answered the questions, and appreciate that.
Council members, I think most of you have my application and you can see what I've done. But I am a resident of Loma Linda and surrounding areas for over 30 years. I came to Loma Linda 30 years ago, and I've witnessed many changes involved in many programs, projects, and activities. I was part of the development of the $14 million new Loma Linda Elementary School. Also assisted in fundraising for the Loma Linda City Fire Department's museum. Took part in many fundraising projects for various organizations of the city with Loma Linda as a member of Kiwanis Club. And was the academy's representative at the Chamber of Commerce from 1978 to 1988. My interest in Loma Linda is to continue to be part of a vibrant city that will be able to manage its growth, provide for its citizens, preserve its legacy, develop its potential, encourage its new businesses, and be a positive influence to the cities surrounding us. My background is administrative educator by profession with emphasis in administration, budgets, financing, accounting, investments, and taxes. I was employed as a director for the city and county of Honolulu, Model Cities Program as its housing director from 1969 to 1974, in charge of the redevelopment of the west side of Oahu, including several housing developments, one with over 1,500 homes for low and moderate income community. My work included community outreach and organizing community committees for various types of services, parts of development of the community organizations such as fires departments, medical and emergency services, new parks, recreation facilities, improved roads. My employment included administering fiscal management for several organizations, three health organizations, three education, one restaurant. I don't know how I got into that one. But I did work for Carl's Junior Restaurants as a CFO under Bernard Carter Investments, and did that for several years. And I'm retired now. I don't believe I have any conflict of interest with anybody. I'm a kind of maverick to myself. I did get invited earlier in my political aspirations by a group of people to come and talk to them about, about what I believed in and what I thought I could do for the city before I took a interesting road, sidetracked with my life. And that was interesting in itself. But I think and I believe that I still have lots to offer to the city of Loma Linda. I think while people may think I'm, I'm connected to developers, I think you can find on my final papers that I sent to the city clerk that all my money came from real grassroots people, not from any developers. So my most, I'm mostly interested in continuing to serve the city. I think I can play a vital role in the, in the city. I think I have enough in a background for many parts of the planning commission. You have any questions? I'm here to answer.
Start out, Lem. Give a little bit of explanation what you did for the city and county of Honolulu and that model.
Okay. Model Cities Program was during the time when Lyndon Johnson was president. And his main concern was to have lots of cities that was going to be improved and bring in many different improvements. My job was to hit up one section of the Model Cities area, which was to be redevelopment, which was West Oahu. Kind of, let me try, if I can find a place that you might be able to relate to. Pretty rough area from, if anybody's been to Honolulu, we're talking about any place from Nanakuli to Makaha. Anybody been to Honolulu and know that? That's West Oahu. Kind of tough place, rough. We improved quite a bit, a lot of homes and a lot of developments, new in many other community activities. And I was responsible to my relationship to the community. I represented the city. And in all of our developments and in all of our organizations, we dealt with the cities and, I mean, with the, the people in the community and showed them what was going to be done. And got their input. And basically, that was done throughout my whole term.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Lealoa? If not, thank you very much. The next application we have on file... The next application we have on file is for Mr. Hibbard. I don't think he's here tonight. He was here last council meeting, I believe indicated he would not be able to make it tonight. Again, apologize for making it difficult to be here, but...
We did hear from him.
We did hear from him and I think all impressed with his years of service as chief deputy to one of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors and so forth. So every single person here has some very unique and interesting areas of service and interest. The next application we have is Dori Morgan. Think she was able to make it tonight. Again, we, I believe, heard from her last time as well and very carefully has filled out our questionnaires that we have in front of us. The next application we have is Mr. Patel and have his response and so forth here in front of us. And any comments? Time's yours.
Thank you. My name is Shaquille Patel. I just gave my presentation last time and actually I just came in here to see what was happening. I've been in this commission for almost ten years and there was a few of the things that was... I thought the city could look a little better and that was my main concern to give this application this time. If there anybody have any questions, you know, I might be able to elaborate some of the issues or comments.
I never thought the day would come, but, you know, we've been, I think, concerned and so forth about not having any or enough architects on our planning commission. Now...
That's what's surprising to me.
Now potentially we would have, I believe, three architects if you went on board. So that's quite a change. Do you see that as a good or a bad thing?
I think that's a good thing. I would say that at least we can get the things done faster and...
Is it hard to get an architectural license?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's very tough.
All right. Any other additional questions for Mr. Patel? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And then I believe our final application we have on file is Mr. Stewart, Robert Stewart. And again, he was here with us last time, not able to make it tonight. And hopefully have our questions that we were able to ask him last time and again has a background in engineering and I'm just amazed at the qualifications and the number of candidates that we have on file. Never seen anything like this. It's just terrific. But I think we as a council, we've postponed this several times tonight. We need to make a decision so the planning commission can function fully. There has been the issue that city attorney did bring up with some conflicts, I believe, with the university and those implications. We've talked about those. I don't think we need to belabor that anymore. But those are the status of our applications that we have on file and would like to open up to the council for discussion and eventually action.
Go ahead.
I move Lem as the...
I'd second that with the comment that I think a number of the people who are presented here are very good. I appreciate the new addition here to the group to be considered, Fred Coz...
Casar Robbadi.
Got it. Some very good qualifications there also and I think some of the others would bring great strength. Robert Stewart has been added to one of the other committees and will serve well. But I do like Lem's experience in a number of areas and frankly, he's worked with some municipal work in Hawaii and I wasn't really acquainted with that until more recently, but I think that might be a good strength. And he has frankly been very interested in this community for some time. So I'd join in the second on that. I might and probably am violating Robert's rules of orders, but this is a little different item than typically just one action. Would like to entertain, at least get on the table if there are any other applicants to be moved for this position and then take a vote on each one if that... If there are any, there may not be, if that is acceptable to the rest of the council. Any other nominations for this position?
Mayor, I would like to nominate... I'll just call him Fred. Your last name is too difficult for me to pronounce, so I will not try to do that. And part of the reason I'm actually nominating him is not only because of his application, which clearly indicates that he has the experience and knowledge to deal with many of the complex issues in our city. It is extremely important for me and I think many residents to have someone on the planning commission that understands traffic. Traffic has been a major, major issue in this city and it's not just, you know, good enough to have architects that can tell us how pretty buildings are, but they've got to be able to understand traffic flow and how projects are put together, the different things that developers can and cannot do, what they're allowed to do. Those are all very important items. I do respect Mr. Lealoha's background. I think that in itself is quite strong. However, I believe in this particular case Fred would do a better job at dealing with our traffic situation here in the city. At least his input would be vital.
We have Mr. Casar Robb. I'll stick with Fred if you don't mind. I'm sorry. Moved for this position. Is there a second for that?
I'll second the nomination. Just put it in.
Are there any other names that we would like to... Is that Ms. Palmieri? Any... I'm sorry, would you like to speak on the planning commission item or not? We're on that item. Great. Come forward, please. Please. We were just on that particular item. If you'd come up to the microphone and introduce yourself for those that are watching and give us your thoughts and interests related to why you chose to submit an application. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Carolyn Palmieri and I've had connections with Loma Linda a long time. I used to come out here with my dad when I was young and he came out for medical school graduations. I remember it very well. My parents moved out here with the school when it came out. They're both buried here. My children were educated here and raised and we own a home in Loma Linda, my husband and I. And so naturally I have kind of an interest in what happens with Loma Linda. I think we have the possibilities and are meeting the possibilities of being an excellent city. I would like to see us be a unique city if we could do some things a little differently than other cities do, so we are not just another bedroom community along the way. I think some original children sculptures and fountains would help that. I also think that we might be able to involve more citizens in beautification projects for Loma Linda. I would be willing to start such a group if possible, gardens, water-sparing plant gardens or maybe jogging paths like that. Now, I know we're working on some of those things already and I'd like to be part of planning that because I think that's really interesting. Do you have any questions?
I don't have a question. I just want to comment that out of everyone who put an application, you had the most detailed answers of anyone else. I'm in awe. And the one item that kind of stuck out in my mind was the fact that you admire Cupertino, California, and I admire that same city primarily because it's the home of Apple Computer.
Well, we lived there for some years and I liked it because it was really citizen-friendly. Parks and trails were easy to get to and there were a lot of them. And I liked the way they developed their business opportunities. There were a lot of original type of businesses there, bookstores and other things that were unique to the area, not just large chain ones. Now, of course, it wasn't all like that and I don't think any city can all be like that, but I would like to see more of that kind of a thing here if we could.
We note, actually, before you got here, we happened to note that you were very strong pro-trail, which comes through in your statement.
Yes.
A lot of us applaud very much. And I don't know if you're also familiar with the Trail Committee, which is another group that's working on...
No, I was not, but I knew that there was one.
Some things that you seem to be also interested in. So there's a lot of areas you seem to have some strong interest in and have you had a chance to explore at all up in the hills, the new trail system we're developing there yet or not really?
No, I haven't. I'd like to do that. I don't know where to get on it, I guess.
Well, after the meeting, maybe we can connect up. The chair of the Trail Committee happens to be sitting right there, too. Maybe you could make a connection.
I would really like to see our children, our city be more children-friendly. The structures that we have for playing are just the same as every other park and there are some really original ideas out there that are not any more expensive, based on our geography or maybe our history, you know, that I think we could develop that would be an asset.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from council? If not, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Any other nominations for this position?
How are you proposing to have the vote?
Up to any suggestions, but before we do that, I'm actually going to move to nominate Ms. Palmieri. I'm impressed with her application and her vision for some of the beautification, so we'll move her for a position. We could just expand the planning commission, Mr. Mayor. Okay, all right. That got shot down pretty fast, Mr. Mayor.
We have a hard time getting a quorum sometimes, so...
I'm just admiring the fact that we have lots of talent in the community here.
If I'm allowed, I would second Mrs. Palmieri if I'm allowed to have a first. Otherwise, none of us would be able to get a first or a second.
Since we're somewhat suspending Robert's rules of order, since this is a little bit different item, I think that's perfectly appropriate unless our attorney shuts us down, which may happen at any second, but... No, I wouldn't do that, Mr. Mayor, but this is more akin to an election where any number of candidates could be nominated, but to make the appointment, it will simply take three affirmative votes, a majority of the council. I guess we should ask, I guess we could ask her one other question, whether she has a conflict with the university? One issue that has come up in the past related to conflict of interest with income is whether you or immediate family member have any income source from any of the major institutions or businesses in town at the current time.
No. I'm retired. My husband works for a company that's based in Spain.
For those of you listening, the answer to that is no, so not a conflict situation.
Mr... I just have a question which doesn't necessarily occur to me that doesn't necessarily reflect on her answer, but if I retire and retired for several years, but I did work for Loma Linda University, part of my retirement comes from that, is that still a conflict or is that gone then? How does retirement work?
Well, typically you look at whether or not the applicant is a source of income during the preceding twelve months. I don't think anybody's ever asked me about retirement income per se and I'm just racking my brain off the top of my head and I don't recall a specific rule on that. The implication of a source of income being that that source of income could influence the decision by the threat of either decreasing that source of income or stream of income or benefiting the person with an increased income. With the retirement situation, that issue would not be present. However, you could still have a situation where a decision theoretically could affect the financial ability of that applicant to continue to make those payments even if there was no threat or inducement intended. So it still could be a conflict.
It would only even theoretically be a concern if it were a defined benefit plan that's still administered by the employer.
Right, which ours isn't anyway.
If it's a defined contribution, then it would be administered by Vanguard or whoever else. Go ahead.
Please. If you could come up to the microphone, please, so everyone can hear you.
It's true that I retired as a nurse from Loma Linda Medical Center here, but I've been retired for at least four years and all of my accounts are now in the hands of my broker. They're not administered through Loma Linda and I have no contact with Loma Linda Medical Center.
That seems fairly clear.
I just wanted to clarify that even if you did, I would have no problem nominating you.
All right. Further discussion as far as how to proceed for lack of any other way to handle it, I was simply going to go alphabetically, but I'm open to any input from the council. We are here to act together and I'm certainly not arbitrarily going to set any rules, so please, open for comment, suggestions.
Well, since it's open to us, I think that you might want to entertain, look at my candidate.
So specific order of action you would recommend?
Sure. You said there is no specific order. If it's not the order in which they're nominated, I think he's highly qualified. I think we should seriously take a look at him and I think there's no reason for us to debate or wait longer.
I'm sorry, who is your candidate?
I nominated Fred.
Okay, because you... Did you also, let's see, did you second?
I seconded Mrs. Palmieri.
Okay, I wasn't sure who your candidate was. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I didn't know if you'd switch parties or, you know...
They're both at the same party.
Because in that sense, I still would maintain, I think, our alphabetical order of the three candidates we have on the table. Mr. Mayor, part of the issue I'm running into is this. I know some of the people, some I don't. And, you know, I'm trying to tell just from, and maybe we're all on the same boat, I don't know how many of...
same boat, I don't know how many of these folks, different members of the council are acquainted with. Frankly, I know a couple, but I don't know the background. I don't know if there's a strong philosophical bent. I think I've made it clear in the past, I'd like to see some balance on the Planning Commission, so issues get debated. I'd like to have the Planning Commission function, and it sounds like most of the people we're talking about seriously tonight would not have a conflict. In fact, it sounds like all the ones that have been nominated tonight would not have a conflict. And they all have some strengths. What I'm not quite certain is from this brief, these brief discussions, I don't know these folks, I don't know if any of the rest of the council members do and have a strong feeling one way or the other, or whether, because I like Fred, too, I mentioned that. I don't know if he has a strong feeling one way or the other, or if, I don't know where we're heading exactly and how we make the decision, because these are all a little bit unknown to me. I know Lem, but I don't know as many of the others.
The one thing I am convinced of, and I am not willing to postpone action tonight, I think we have to take action tonight, that part I am absolutely determined and arbitrary on, but the rest, I'm looking for your input and however you'd like to handle it.
Well, I'd like to know, because it's, you know, every one of my yard signs had the word balance on it, so I'm interested in balance as well. I'm interested in what you believe the current four members of the council represent and that that might need counterbalancing versus, you know, is it kind of neutral already, and then we can pick somebody who's kind of neutral?
You mean council or Planning Commission?
Yeah, the Planning Commission. Did I say council?
Yes.
Well, you know-
I certainly were balanced.
Council's currently balanced, I think, and I'm pretty happy with it.
Not all the time.
It goes back and forth.
Some think we're unbalanced, but that's another issue.
So what do you perceive as being the Planning Commission's current bent?
Just from, just from, what I'd like to see is to be certain that when issues come before the Planning Commission, various points of view get considered in terms of developing good projects, and that you have enough background in the different specialized areas of knowledge, you know, science and humanities, you know, there's certain general areas where you get a variety of questions. So, for example, forbid the thought, but if you had five of any one profession, you'd probably tend to get one type of question, but if you have a little variety, you're going to pick up more questions from different points of view. So I'm more interested in getting that and where people are open-minded to considering projects. So when a report comes to the City Council, it's a well-thought-out report that is supported. And as long as we have that, I'm generally liking the number of the people who are here tonight. I don't think that maybe totally answers your question, because I don't have a strong definitive feeling on ruling out any of the people who are being considered here seriously tonight. They all have different strengths.
Yeah, my impression is that we have two architects, and we didn't, we haven't so far nominated another architect, so that would be potentially balanced. Is there any other specific concern? Because, you know, I, you know, we, I think we appointed, we have four other members who seem to be pretty closely balanced, from what I can tell. I don't, I don't see any particular bent, you know, they haven't had much chance to reveal themselves yet, but do you see, I just want to know, do you see any particular thing requiring balancing out right now?
Well, I can't really go further than what I answered before. We have, as you pointed out, two architects, and I think we have good people who are on there, but we're ending up with a pretty strong bent with architects, and so I suppose the next person you pick, you'd want somebody who just brings a, maybe a different discipline, perhaps. I don't think we're saying anything very different.
Yeah, well, the three we've nominated so far do that. So, like you said, you don't have any big opposition. It'd be nice if we could have a consensus candidate, but we'll see.
Floyd has a suggestion to solve all our problems.
There's an easy way to solve this voting problem, and that is just go out and ask each five, there's five of us and there's only three candidates. So ask for the preference of each one of us, we'll tell you what it is, and then we may get one on the first ballot. If we don't, the one who gets the least or doesn't get one will be dropped, and then we'll have a second round, and that'll solve the problem.
That seems fair.
What's the difference between doing that and just going one by one? And if the first one goes through, it goes through. If it doesn't, then we go to the next one.
Well, no, because it's possible in that case that, that seeing who's dropped out, I may change my mind.
Yeah, you don't particularly want to say no to someone you're going to say yes later.
That's correct.
That's right, yeah.
He has the advantage of doing that, that you're not, because we're not voting against anybody, it's just we're seeing different people that we like, and if the first person you vote for doesn't get it, I think each of us like different things about the three candidates. So it has some advantages.
So your specific suggestion is that we go through and initially-
Name the first preference.
Name our first preference.
It's way the old conventions used to be 100 years ago, when they would do a first and a second ballot, and you just agree-
Forty-third ballot.
Well, that, yeah, it took a while for Lincoln to get nominated.
All right, let's make a decision. Either we go through and do it alphabetically and just take a vote, or we go through and vote the first preference that each of us has, consensus from council.
I'd support the concept that Floyd has proposed, as it allows you to back someone later if your first nomination doesn't receive enough votes, and we just all have to agree that if somebody's ruled out, then you limit it down. But I'm willing to live with that if you are. I don't know that anybody has a majority right now, that's the thing.
Well, we won't know until we actually get to the vote. I'm hoping that, I'm making a compelling case for Fred, and I'm hoping that the rest of you may change your mind about some of your candidates, and we'll find out when we get to the vote.
The problem is, as I see it, obviously, Ms. Popescu has indicated who his first preference is. I assume the maker moved the other two candidates, and I'll speak for myself on, you know, my preference based on that, and is that in order of the individual that moved Mr. Lealoa as well? So we're kind of back where we started from, I think.
Exactly.
No, but there's two other people who didn't nominate anybody who would-
Well, yeah.
It's true.
Those two are called kingmakers.
We will let those two individuals speak.
I have a question about the Brown Act. Is there any possibility for caucusing in groups of two or less in an open session?
You mean on open mics?
I'll turn it off.
Well, under the Brown Act, any two of you could speak regarding an action, but if two of you speak, and then you each go off and speak to somebody else, and you reach a collective concurrence outside of the public meeting, that would be prohibited, so.
So the two aforementioned kingmakers could potentially caucus?
The sheriff is sitting here watching this.
Well, I would advise against that. If you already have an opinion of one and you seek a third, that would create a collective concurrence of three.
Based on not hearing any better solution, I am simply going to go through and ask for a vote on each candidate alphabetically unless council stands up and totally rebels, but I see no other solution. Going to go through alphabetically, first candidate that gets three votes will be the one that's appointed to the Planning Commission. Again, we'll go through alphabetically. First individual, I see objection.
Well, there's a problem, is that you could go through this and nobody would get three votes.
If we don't, then we will deal with that issue as it arrives.
So we'll, so if it's two, two, one, we'll eliminate the one for the second ballot?
Which is-
I think that's fair.
And then are we going to only collect ayes or nays?
First time through, would simply look for if we get three votes for an individual, I think that makes our appointment, unless the rest of the council objects.
Okay, so the first ballot is just the ayes?
Correct.
Okay.
Is that acceptable to the council?
Sure.
All right.
I'm only speaking for myself, but.
To try not to prolong this any longer, and I think, again, it just simply speaks of the quality and depth of our applicants that we're struggling with so much. The first individual, Mr. Kasarabi, I'd like to ask those that favor appointing him by voting aye.
Aye.
I hear two affirmative votes for Mr. Kasarabi. The next individual is alphabetically, Mr. Lealoa. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Two affirmative votes for Mr. Lealoa. And the last individual that we have on our list then is Ms. Palmieri. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can we vote, can we vote twice?
You know, we didn't make that clear on that issue.
I assumed you'd only vote once.
Floyd's assumption was we would only vote once.
I think we should go back to Floyd's method.
Well, sure, I mean, I guess if we're going to do that, we can all vote for everybody and let everybody feel good.
You can only vote once.
I think we can only vote once to probably even out the feel or to make a decision, otherwise we're going to just keep going round and round. Based on that, unless the council objects, that will bring it down to Mr. Kasarabi and Mr. Lealoa. Again, if the rest of the council doesn't object, we will vote first on Mr. Kasarabi. Everyone will get one vote, one time, for the two candidates. Are we clear enough on this? Hopefully have the ground rules, so no confusion. All those in favor for Mr. Kasarabi, please say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of Mr. Lealoa, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Lealoa, congratulations and look forward to your work on the Planning Commission. Thank you, all of you involved. Sorry for the lengthy time this took and so forth, but tried to give it our best effort and our best deliberation. All right, back to the agenda and reports of Councilmen, Councilman Peterson?
Yes, I have a question, and that is, I do move up and down the trail along the San Tim Creek, and some time ago, there was a lot of activity taking place up there, just on the east side of town, up near the well. There was, somebody was building, there was a lot of development happening? Where's that again? Along the San Tim Creek.
By Beaumont, or?
Yeah, yeah, just this side of Beaumont. And I had talked to you about that, and you said that that was part of a, what were they doing up there, and they're gone now? I haven't seen any, there's nothing there. Everything's just gone.
That was a county flood control.
What were they doing?
They're planting trees.
That's what they were doing, planting trees? In the bottom of the creek? Or where? Where'd they plant the trees?
Along the, along the channel. I'm not quite sure where it is.
I mean, there's no, the only place that I'm seeing any trees is right down the middle of the channel. I don't see any along the edge anywhere.
Right now, from what I was told, is in the establishment period. They already planted trees.
That's what they were doing. I thought that they was, okay. Then the second question is, that well, who owns that well? The well that's sticking out in the middle of the creek? The well?
The one at the end of, at the end of a loton, right next to the channel?
Yes.
That one, we belong to the county flood control.
The well does?
Yes.
Oh, is that right now? Okay, so they took that over, and it's active?
I don't think so. At one time, we asked them if they want to use it for irrigation water, but I don't think they-
Because it looks like there's been some work done at that wellsite, looks like some new equipment, and I was just wondering if it's-
They might have, I can check.
Oh, so that's county now, okay.
Yes.
Anything else, Councilman Peterson?
Yeah, and just one other thing along there, we do have some serious graffiti problems along there, again, I noticed. Whose responsibility is that?
We are, as bad as that is disappeared. We have been working with the sheriff, and the sheriff identified a couple teenagers that are responsible for attacking, so they are working on that right now.
Just want a quick update, and actually, Dusty can update just as well as I can, but I'm not sure whether the general public is aware of this, but we had a meeting with the sandbag director and the city manager approximately two and a half to three weeks ago regarding the Tipicanoo Anderson interchange. We'll see what we can do to speed it up. They've been, made some changes. The original contract to the firm that was doing the design and the Sequo has been terminated, and they have just in the process of hiring a new firm, and hopefully that will be approved sometime here next month, and we'll get that project back on track. That project's been on the books now for way too many years. We're still having major traffic problems, and I'm hoping that we'll try to speed it up. On another front, I've been working very, very hard in trying to, try to acquire some federal funding for the California Relent's Boulevard, and we're in the process of putting together a report that we'll present to Congressman Jerry Lewis, and hopefully we'll get some federal funding for that, because it's another intersection that needs significant work. As we get closer to that, I'm hoping that the general public's going to assist us by writing letters and calling the congressman to emphasize to him how important that intersection is to our community, especially now that Loma Linda University has expanded its footprint, and now there's the specialty hospital, and that corridor is vital for ensuring that we have emergency vehicles going through there easily without any further delays. So it's a very, very important project for this community.
Just to comment on that, one of the things that, as you know, Ovi, is that had been discussed for years, that area, and one of the problems was that the cost of developing it was going to be borne by the projects that are now blocked, obviously. And maybe at some point, we're going to have to have some discussion in the town as to what types of things the town would like to see go in that area, because the, there was, as you know, there was going to be a widening of California, and that whole intersection was going to be redone, and frankly, Measure V and other things have made that moot. So one of the things that a lot of times governments have been able to do is get things like that funded through the private development, and I think one of the points of Measure V was to have projects like that funded by the development that go in that area. I think it'd be very helpful down the line for the landowners in that area to get an idea of what the council would like to see go into that area, because as you know, we've talked about a research park, a lake, a church, housing, you know, things for the university, things for the community, and retail, and I think that, I think the people who own land, I know there are quite a few people who are involved with some of these groups that have probably talked to all of us, they're trying to find out what they can do with it, and that maybe is something down the line that, as you're trying to find funding for something like that, you might get an idea of what would be, what would be acceptable, because those people would probably be willing to support the funding of that if they thought they could use their land for something.
Councilman Peterson?
Yes, that's a very interesting approach to take to solve the problems on that corner. I think what you're asking for is an earmark, and I noticed the campaign sign on your yard is for Mr. McCain, who's totally against earmarks, so if you vote for him, you're not going to get that corner done.
If he votes for him, California will still have a plurality of three million votes for Obama.
I know you're trying to campaign for your candidate, but I'm not going to go there, but just a quick reference to what Mr. Peterson, Mr. Ziprick, made reference to. That intersection has needed to be fixed since 1994. We are now 14 years later. Part of the reasons I believe that the voters changed the direction of the council was because the par council really did very little, to be honest with you, and I think that we need to be more proactive, listen to the residents, that intersection needs to be done now, whether we add another house there, another lake, another church, that intersection needs to be done now. It's getting worse and worse literally by the month. So that's why, and in reference to, you made reference to Measure V. Measure V allows for developers to spend money in order to fix traffic. This issue is not about future development, it's about present situation. situation. I don't think it really matters as to who really pays for it. I think the voters expect it to be done. So that's why we need to be proactive in getting it done now in any means possible.
But Measure V does say that the developer of any particular projects is to pay for their portion of the infrastructure, does it not?
It does, but that's not the issue at this point. The issue at this point is, this intersection needs to be done, and we're trying to acquire funds to do it the fastest way possible.
You do know that there had been a plan to do exactly that that was blocked by your efforts?
Yeah. I don't believe that my efforts blocked the intersection. Okay, I think the efforts of the same people who spent a lot of money to put you in office blocked the intersection, to be honest with you.
When you attack the council for not getting a road fixed, and you're the reason the road didn't get fixed, you have to accept some responsibility for it.
Are we going to get into debate? I can't believe you're actually going there.
Well, Mr. Mayor.
So it's my fault that there's traffic there.
I only have to respond when, if somebody takes a shot and says, this should have been done long ago, and people were working for years to do exactly that, I think we have a right to respond.
Yeah, except for the fact that you forget that 1,400 people signed signatures against those houses in light of the fact that supposedly developers were going to spend money to fix it. That never actually was finalized, by the way. A lot of it was conceptual.
I have no problem with the people signing the signatures. A lot of them have talked and said they weren't totally familiar with what the results were going to be. When you now attack the council saying, we somehow should have solved the problem, you have to understand why the problem didn't get solved. I'm all for working on it because a lot of us have spent many hours dealing with that very issue.
But I think we're heading in the wrong direction if we're telling the citizens that if you want traffic fixed, you have to go along with all the houses we're approving. That is not the direction we're going, especially when we have other options. We got $50 million for Tippecanoe and Anderson from the federal government, and not a single house was added in order to put that money there. So the idea that somehow we have to add more houses in order to fix traffic, I don't think the voters are going to buy that.
You have to recognize, and a lot of us were involved with some of those projects too. It took many, many hours. And frankly, Mayor Christman, former Mayor Christman, spent countless hours working on those funding issues. And you criticized him for how long it took. Just to be fair, so the public understands, I applaud your effort going after earmarks. I think it's great. It's just getting harder to get those now than it used to be.
I'm still hoping that you're going to support in getting funding to fix traffic.
Absolutely.
Then we shouldn't be debating this.
Well, but when you make a comment, I'm at least going to respond so the record's clear.
Record is clear. We've had that project on the books since 1994, and very little has been done. If it takes 14 years to fix a road, then we do need to make some changes.
Sometimes it takes, you know, San Tim Creek flooded in 1969 when I was a student in the school, and it's taken several decades to get it done. It takes years and years, and sometimes decades, to do certain projects. And that's one of them.
Well, I'll leave it at that.
Floyd trying to.
Two sentences. I'm just not in favor of letting the developers off the hook, that's all.
I have a few quick comments. First one is related to, I'd like to ask Traffic Committee and Public Works to look at the possibility of crosswalk across from University Church to the parking center. I believe the sheriff made a presentation at church recently about the concerns of safety of jaywalking and so forth. And I'd just like to ask Traffic Safety Committee to look, see if there's any other solutions. Some feel the crosswalks are a little too far, especially for some of the older folks to use effectively. So I'd like to refer that to Traffic Committee. Number two was brought up tonight, and since things taking longer than would like, but maybe just a 60-second update. We've all talked about and expressed our concerns. We'd like clear map signage, et cetera, so people can know where to hike in the trails and land that we've developed. What's the latest on that with a quick update, Jarb?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. As a matter of fact, last week, we just have a subcommittee meeting on, on that, that naming the trails and come up with the mapping. So, Mr. Walling, you want to update on that?
Mayor and council, Jim Walling, I chair of the Trails Development Committee. We had a subcommittee of the Trails Development Committee that met last Thursday evening. And we started naming, using the historic names of the trails, kind of colloquial names. We started transferring those to the master map of the major trails. There's so many trails out there, you can't name possibly every one of them. But we made giant strides in our first meeting. We'll have our next meeting, I think it's coming up two weeks from Thursday, I believe, next regular meeting. Yeah. Well, we'll be taking that back to the full committee. And we've taken, thanks to Dick. I can't think of his last name. I only know him because he sits in the committee all the time. He went through and did extensive analysis and identification of the trails. One of the things that we have to address is a means of reference in any spot out there, what kind of a grid we're going to use and who we're going to tie into so that emergency folks will know where we are in relation to what trail. It's not just naming the trails. But we're well on the way to getting a map and possibly even an overlay map. It'll be up to the council what you want. So in a worry, we're moving it, Mr. Mayor, but it takes a little bit of time again.
As soon as we have some more information that we can put out, we will put that on our website. We'll put some signs up by the park so people know where they really can hike and not be off on private, private land.
Jarb is right on top of us, and we got to move it, I'll tell you.
Good. Thank you.
On that specific note, and those trails up there, I was just up there again looking. And when you walk up on the east side of the flood channel, going up into the hills, in order to get up there, you got to go way around this fence that sticks up there halfway up the hill. Can we open that up so people can just go straight ahead instead of having to go around that thing?
I have been meeting, have a meeting with County Flood Control every other week right now, trying to ask if you give us that property. As soon as they give us that property, we can open up the gate and remove some of the rocks, and that's what hold me up right now.
Can we just cut a hole in the fence? Maybe, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, adding one thing to what Mr. Walling said, we did have a brief discussion the other day, and you did show a couple of us that new map that you folks have been working on with those names on it, which I think is going to be able to be reproduced for the Chamber Commerce?
Yes.
Map, or else distributed as an independent map, which will be, it's improved over what we had originally done because it has a lot more detail. And how, what's the time estimate of getting that out? Another month?
So in summary, staff trails committee is working on getting those maps out for the public. Hopefully, in the next six weeks or so, we'll have something that will be better to guide you. And it is much needed, and a lot of people working hard on it. The last quick item I had was on the state ballot initiatives. It's true, most of them are somewhat tangential to a city, although in years past, this council has formally taken an action against the high-speed rail with concerns of the enormity of the cost. Again, just the bully pulpit we're seeing on our city budget affects of the state taking funds away. I guess I can't help but be concerned. Every single ballot, we have tens of billions of dollars of bonds every time that are being borrowed, and directly or indirectly, I think there is an impact on the city. And I'm just amazed how much money it seems like everyone's willing to continue to borrow. But enough said on that. That's the end of my comments. There's no other ones from council members now appropriate for reports of officers?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I was ready to get that coin out of the vault there.
Better dust it off for next time.
Several months ago, we requested Amtrak look at the possibility of locating a station stop along the tracks that run through town. There's a train that runs, and Mr. Ziprick can speak more to this than I, three times a week, I believe, that goes from here, between here and.
New Orleans, yeah, the connection to Chicago.
Somewhere east. We requested they look at this, and I received word yesterday that they have looked at it, and they did what they call a profit and loss study, and found that it could be profitable for a station stop to be located in Loma Linda. And therefore, they're recommending to the Union Pacific, that we, that they seriously look at it. And so we're on to the next phase of that process.
Is that right?
And they've sent us a rather lengthy document, I think, I'll turn it over to Jarb. It's 80 or so pages of what a station, what a station details, and how it's supposed to look, and signs, and so on and so forth. That's right. We already are.
You made a very small start earlier tonight.
Anyway, so that's certainly good news.
In their profit and loss analysis, did they figure that they were building this train station?
Negative. They said we would have to seek funds either from the state, or the federal government, or some other sources to construct a station.
Mr. Ziprick, it's time to get some earmarks.
That's right. Actually, Ovi, I figure we're going to be working on earmarkings together. We'll be on the same side on this.
Well, that sounds exciting, the first step of a long process, but at least it's a first step. Any other reports of officers?
Just want, can I ask Jarb a question? And Jarb, there was something came out the other day about, something you wrote about the taking away the noise at the, at the intersections. What's really happening there now? What's the latest on that?
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, we have a scheduled meeting with Union Pacific Railroad and Public Utility Commission in two weeks. And the design is at, the design is at 75% complete, and we just need their approval. And as soon as they approve our design, then we have to give it back to Union Pacific Railroad to decide the actual gate, because they are the one who's responsible for designing the gate and install the gate and putting the new track. And in the agreement, we have to come back to the city council for approval of the agreement, and to see how much it costs for, for us to pay them to maintain the gate and for the liabilities.
Last comment?
Mr. Mayor, we have a small task force, which I know you are a part, and several of us are a part, to work on the depot issue. Would it be appropriate, and I don't know if it's, if it's informally okay to do this or not, or if we need to bring it back, but to add kind of an invitee from the institutions? When we got this word, we did have a chance, when we were advising you earlier today, to let Dr. Hart also know about the Amtrak development. And we threw it out, but I'm wondering if it'd be in the spirit of where we are, if we could just informally include somebody from the institution for planning purposes? Because I think we had long expected that the depot would be in a location convenient to serve the institutional community. Is that something that would be okay with the consensus to do, or do we need to have a formal, something more formal to do that? All right?
Unless there's any objections, we will have a consensus to do that. And someone of the university's choosing, that center's choosing. All right. If there are no other items, we will adjourn the city council meeting, and I will turn things over to the redevelopment chair.
Okay, the redevelopment agency meeting's called to order. We'll dispense with a roll call. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any reports from the public, anyone wanting to comment on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go to item number one, the minutes of October 14. May I move it? Is there any objection to that? Okay, seeing none, it's approved. Item number two, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Chairman, this involves a mobile home in university, mobile estates, that is basically structurally sound, but it does have problems with roof. It's an old roof. And there are areas in the actual flooring that has been damaged because of the failure of the roof. So when you get roofs and floors, the money adds up very quickly. So we are asking for an additional $3,350 to address those issues, along with the other items that the building inspector has called out. So the total, the total amount to be expended on this mobile home would be $9,350.
What's the pleasure of the agency board?
Move approval.
Is there any objection to that? Hearing none, it's approved. Any reports, projects? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.